On this. Good evening, this is the San Marino Planning Commission meeting for September. We have, it looks like a full house of live humans here. So we shall now do what we used to do before the pandemic and that's. Go through the salute to the flag if you'd kindly join me. Hey, thank you very much. It looks like we have a roll call if we could just go through our planning commissioners present. Just take a brief roll call and then we'll get into some of the preliminary remarks.
Chair Brody.
Present.
Vice Chair Cheng.
Present.
Commissioner Dustin.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
And Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Chow.
Present.
And alternate Commissioner Okazaki is absent today.
Okay, thank you very much. The agenda for this meeting has been published at. San Marino City Hall, the Public Library, the recreational recreation committee department and the website. Each commissioner has received the plans for today's meeting. And is well, are each of them are well aware of. The application and the all the details with regard to it have visited the site. And hence, we're not coming in here. With without any knowledge of each of the applications. When speaking of an item, take that into consideration and please make your comments brief and to the point. What we will do initially is ask the staff for their report. Ask if any commission members have any questions of staff. And then open the meeting whereby the applicant's representative or her representative. Can come up and make a statement and briefly describe some of the things that they'd like to highlight about the application. We will then ask anyone in the public whether they'd like to comment for against or about proposal. And after hearing that, we will close the public aspect of the meeting. And then basically canvas each of the commissioners and find out where their positions are. And perhaps a brief discussion of the matter. It's important to note that if the matter is. Essentially accepted. And there's a vote in favor of the application. The application itself becomes the law of the property. And at that point, any variation can result in a fine, another appearance for the planning commission. A, an additional fee for for that appearance. And so it's very, very important to keep in mind. That if an application is accepted with conditions or without conditions, whatever the conditions are, they become the the law of the property. It's also important to understand that there is a fifteen day appeal period if the application is denied. Since we only have one matter appear appearing today, it should be something that. Should be handled relatively quickly. So with that, let's begin the matter with. Well, let me do this. Let me ask if there's anyone who wishes to make general comment. Public comment about anything not on the agenda today. Anyone have such a desire to do so? Just raise their hand. Anything, Camelia?
There's nothing through Zoom.
Okay, let's get on to the public hearing. Item number one is the tree removal permit. Twenty-two, five, ten at three oh, one, one Monterey Road. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, our staff report will be presented by our assistant planner, Eric G.
Tree removal permit number twenty-two dash five, one, zero at three, zero, one, one Monterey Road. The property owner applied for the removal of eleven trees on their property. Based on analysis of the city's outsider brand forester consultant, the city granted the owner's permission to remove three of the eleven tree with conditions. The decision is deflected in the tree removal permit twenty-two dash five, one, zero. The owners are appealing the denial of the tree removal permit as to the remaining eight trees on the list in the staff report. Those trees that are subjected of this repeal are number two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. After the appeal was filed, the cities in-house have been forced to review the property's owner's request and determine that three of the eight remaining trees should be removed. These are the trees number two, three, and four on the list provided in the staff report. They do not provide much canopy cover thus generating fewer ecological benefit than woody trees. Staff agrees with this decision to approve the removal of these trees with the condition specified in the staff report. The staff recommendation therefore be to grant the appeal in part and deny that appeal in part. Specifically, staff recommends that the commission grant the appeal to allow removal of trees number two, three, and four with conditions regarding tree placement as set forth in the staff report. And to deny the appeal with regards to tree number seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Those five trees would remain. Under municipal code section twenty-three point one, nine point zero six C. This planning commission has the authority in this appeal hearing to one, affirm modify or reverse the action of the community development director or two. Refer the matter back to community development director for further review and consideration. In the event that the planning commission grants any part of the appeal guarding the eight trees. Staff will make the necessary modification to the existing tree move permit and is reissue to the property owners. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And anyone have any questions of staff? Yes, John?
I just wanted to clarify the recommendation that was in the email dated nine, twenty-three from the urban forester to the assistant planner. The recommendation for the replanting, that is for the entire permit or for just those three palms that were added? Not sure if I'm making sense.
No, I understand.
Okay.
Um, that was for the entire replacement. For the other removal.
So the only trees that they're going to be obligated to replace are going to be those four twenty-four inch box and eight fifteen gallons.
At under our recommendation, yes.
Thank you. And then. Oh, just, you know, I customarily like to point out code violations that I see when I do visits and I just wanted to bring some things to the attention of staff. So the front hedge height on the subject property is, I believe, over the legal height limit for that area district, which is five foot, six inches. Also, the neighbor to the immediate east. And then if you go further down the street to the east on Monterey, there's another couple houses that also have hedges that appear to be substantially over that height. Also, there was vinyl fencing. I know the residential was like residential design guidelines strongly discourage that and to my knowledge. Final fencing has never been approved by a review body in the city, at least not as long as I've been paying attention. So that's it. Thank you.
Can anyone else have any inquiry?
I just wanted to say that my brother lives on that block and he actually received a variance for conditional use or whatever for an over in height fence. So some others may have as well. So not, not.
Some of, some of the hedges were clearly old and they probably are grandfathered in, but.
Some grandfathered in and some may have, and some may have permits. I know he did a lot of research. So some, so a lot of them are either grandfathered in and some have permits. So I don't want to mislead anybody that they're all, all of them are in violation, but good thing to check.
Hey, anyone else have any comment or? Or statement to make with regard to the staff report?
No.
Okay, not. Not hearing from anybody in that regard. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative, would you like to make a brief statement with regard to the application? Okay, just state your name and address and then go ahead and and I think there's a mic and a podium you could utilize there.
Thank you, planning commission members for your time, consideration and service to our community. My name is Tanya Gilera. This is my husband, Joe. Our son to be born in Yorkie also live in thirty-eleven Monterey Road. We've lived in the property for about a year ago since we bought the property. Before that, the house was abandoned for over five years and in really, really bad condition. As you can see from the next slide that we provided.
Sorry, please.
Yeah. Yeah. So as you can see from this slide, our property is already dense with lush vegetation and trees. Over the past year, we spent a lot of time and resources trying to maintain and preserve these trees. However, it was evident to us that some of these trees presented hazard to our family as well as to our neighbors. So that's why we petitioned to remove trees number one through eleven. Numbers, three, one through six and marked in green have been either approved or recommended to approved and we agree with the assessment. Number eight, at this point, we feel comfortable with the city urban foresters recommendation on pruning and preserving the tree. So we're not looking forward to remove anymore. At this time, we like to take, you know, the members of the staff for all their time, effort and support through the process. Really what we want to do is really focus our attention on the remaining palm palm trees, which is trees seven, nine, ten, and eleven. And all the trees marked in blue are really just a representation of the trees that we've been really. Trying to preserve and maintain over the past year. So here we're just trying to make sure, you know, we address our concerns as we still have overwhelming concerns about our safety. For our family and for our neighbors regarding the remaining farm countries and my husband is going to walk you through some of those concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for giving us this opportunity. Maybe if we can go to the next slide, please, that would be helpful. First, just also want to mention, you know, we love San Marino as a dream for us to live in the city. And we, you know, like the schools, the beauty of it, the greenery, and we're not just. You know, decided out of the blue to remove these trees. We really liked the house when we saw it as first time home buyers. We're not arborists, didn't really understand, you know, the trees that were on on this property. And we worked, as Tanya mentioned, really hard to save several other trees that were in really bad shape due to non-operational sprinkler systems. The two really. Large. Yeah, cypress trees were heat stressed and olive trees were completely brown and dying. And now they look significantly better. So really, you know, our problems with the palm kind of became apparent over time as we started living in the house. Having witnessed a few close calls and seeing things falling. And became, you know, concerned about it and especially when it gets windy. The picture that you're seeing now was after. Some windy conditions that happened in January of twenty twenty-two. And that was kind of a major turning point for us. During the process, when the wind was happening, there was debris and palm fronds hitting the roof consistently for pretty much twenty-four hours. I was convinced in the middle of it that something had damaged the roof. And I tried to go outside and look at the moment I stepped out of the patio, just got hit really hard in the head with a falling palm frond just. Kind of like a scene from a movie where the camera shakes. It just kind of fell that way. I yelled and my wife came out running and concerned. And I ended up having a cut and a small bruise on the top of my scalp after that. If we go to the next slide, you know, so this is like was the middle of our backyard, the patio, the house. This is the other side of the backyard. And if you keep going one more slide, please. This is the breezeway that we use frequently to pass through next one. This is the driveway in the garage. And if we go one more also. The driveway in the front and the path that most people take to walk up to our house, one more. This is the main front entrance and one more. The side of the house and the purpose to show all of this, it's really hard living with seven of these trees on this one single property. It pretty much covers the entire span of the entire lot. There's no place that is not prone to be subject to the fronds falling down. And if we go one more. All in all, over one hundred palm fronds and and seed pods fell in the span of twenty-four hours. Took me a couple of days to collect them, bundle them because it was the only way the city would pick them up. And had to kind of stay there on the side for about six weeks as the trash company slowly picked them up. A little bit at a time. Kind of the result from all of this is, you know, really feel like. We've now both have like a lot of extreme anxiety and fear being outside, you know, any sign of wind. Our initial instinct is to take shelter and go inside the house. And not to stay out there. So you mentioned, we have a newborn on the way and we have a six pound Yorkie. It really terrifies us that. You know, something could hit them. It's quite unpredictable. The trees are really tall and they fall. To the ground with with a lot of force. It also makes us very anxious to have guests and visitors. We feel responsible and it is kind of our responsibility if somebody got hit or injured. In the process. And our neighbors very much share this, share the same concern. If we go one more slide. This is a picture that our neighbor to the north on Oakdale. Provided us from a different occasion. Where their house was bombarded by all these palm fronds. They have grandkids. One of them is also a newborn. And this is part of their backyard and driveway. And if we go one more slide. That's our neighbor to the east. Also palm fronds falling on their house and the entry to their to their home. Both of them gave us support letters and very much share our concerns. With this, I know that, you know, an argument can be made if the trees are pruned that this threat goes away. From kind of our experience and what we've seen, I think that diminishes this from happening, but it doesn't eliminate it. And if you go one more slide. You'll see this is a Monterey Road, just two houses down from us. The palm trees on the city parkway are regularly pruned on a cycle every two, three years, I believe. And yet, you know, a lot of these fall down if there's windy conditions. So kind of. You know, it is really our honest belief that, you know, you can kind of reduce it with regular pruning, but it doesn't quite eliminate it and it's still. Very unpredictable and all it will take is one. Seed pot to fall at the wrong time at the wrong place to. Ultimately harm someone and especially when it's when it's windy. And then, you know, for for the palms on our house, I had some discussions with with code enforcement who, when we first bought the property, came to our house. But a couple of things and they had also told me that a year before we moved in. They had forced the previous owners who lived out of the country to prune all these palms. Because they were causing quite a bit of havoc on the surrounding area. So they weren't pruned like too long ago before all of this happened. Lastly, you know, I, you know, I think that the city considered a similar case about a year ago. Where there was a concern from another house on Lorraine Road for exactly the same type of tree and the same hazard. And I believe that was approved and then their scenario was just impacting the driveway entering their house. In our case, you know, pretty much affects every aspect of our lives and being in that house with the way that everything is falling. So, so I mean, the living with seven of these trees, it's, it's quite challenging. Makes us, you know, very nervous and afraid for our safety and, you know, our future newborn. And we really want to just ask you to consider application. We want to feel safe living in our home. Enough to be worried or concerned about. You know, either us or a guest or a child or a pet or someone. Getting injured. So really hope, you know, you will consider our application for today. Just very lastly, just. You know, wanted to mention, as Tanya said, you know, we don't want to challenge the Chinese arm anymore. I spoke with the urban forester. And I think we were in agreement after we talked through it with her recommendation. And the recommended tree replacement seems very reasonable as well. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Yes, Jerry?
Quickly, I hope. I just wanted to clarify about the pruning. So you have not pruned the palm trees in the year plus that you've lived there?
We have not.
Okay, and you just think they were pruned.
About a year.
About a year before you moved in?
Yes.
Thank you. And secondly, if you, I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, but since I was there, I was curious. Do you know how old your driveway is?
I have no idea, but it isn't in bad shape.
It's asphalt. It's just, yeah, okay, just. I was just kind of curious because you were talking about the possible damage and it looked kind of old. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you very much. Just have a seat and we'll ask, I could see. An empty room here other than the applicants. Is there anyone online that wishes to chime in?
No, no one's online.
Okay, very well. All right, well, we'll close the public, public aspect of the hearing and. Let's see what our commissioners have to say. Let's begin with Jerry.
Thank you. It's always a little difficult to go first. I always think of it as kind of framing the questions. But for me, I did have to laugh because I remember it very well that the last time we heard something like this. Commissioner Dustin warned us that we could be setting a precedent by granting that appeal when he didn't think that the grounds of. Fronds and or seeds falling was really consistent with our findings. I remember it well because I remember I didn't care. It's so great being on this side of it now. And because I just, just not a fan of those palm trees, get it? Fan of it. Okay. They're, they don't provide any canopy. I'm not clear on why we. Have so many in the city of San Marino or whether the city of San Marino wants anymore in the future. They, they're not indigenous to California as we know. I love them as street trees. You look at Portland, for example, really close there and they've got the street trees that are palm trees. It's a, it's a street defining. Type of tree and that I think is is great for our city, but just in. In in regular. Parcels, when I think of our friends and neighbors who are dealing with certain some of these issues, I'm sympathetic. And so, and I look at those pictures and that confirms what I, what I think about it. So for me, I was going to recommend denial of the appeal as to the Chinese elm, but I won't. Go down there anymore since they've decided to to go along with the recommendations. I, I too agree with the recommendations related to the Chinese elm. But as to the palm trees, I would support their appeal.
Okay, thank you very much.
So probably not a surprise to anybody. This has me very conflicted. You know, as our tree protection ordinance is written, the palms do not qualify for removal. Because, you know, the potential hazard is not a reason. That being said, I also am very, very sympathetic to inheriting. Trees that were not well maintained from the previous owner, especially as somebody who recently did go through a tree removal process because of. Unmaintained trees or not well maintained trees and feeling as though the whole process was very punitive. So I'm very sensitive to that aspect and and similar to Commissioner Wright, I. And what was also written by our arborist, our, sorry, our new urban forester. That I don't believe that palm trees create a shade canopy and I don't think that they have. Any environmental advantageousness. In general. I could agree to. Allowing for the removal of these four additional palms, but then that goes into my other concerns about. Well, it, what I would like. I don't know if it is possible to do this. I would agree with their removal if there was a condition. In which the replacement trees were not based on box size. Or, you know, gallon size, but that we move towards if the, if it is possible for the urban forester to determine replacement trees based on canopy and age of tree. And if there is even the possibility of having a like a one year follow-up to ensure that these trees are well maintained and healthy. Because I think that. As I've mentioned before, and I'm going to mention it again, I think that this is an opportunity for us to really revise our tree protection ordinance. I think that there are aspects of it that don't support our newer residents that, as I've said, have inherited trees that they had no control over. Until they've moved into the house. And I also think that. You know, you can put a stick inside of a thirty-six inch box and it would still qualify under our ordinance versus. Saying something like trees have to have a. Six foot canopy and at least be X amount of years old, no matter what the box size is. I think that that's a more important. Criteria for our purposes and what we're trying to do by creating a shade canopy in a park-like environment in San Marino. I think that that serves the purposes a lot more than a box tree. So, and then I will also just say to the applicants. I have walked by your house almost every day for seven years with my dog. I am very pleased to see owners in the home. And the changes that you've done have been very pleasant. And so. I just want to say that it's really nice having you in the neighborhood and and I see that you're trying to make an effort. And that matters a lot to me as a, as a nearby resident. So that's, so I guess what I'm saying is that I would agree to the removal of these palm trees if we had some kind of. Condition with regards to the replacement trees to ensure a shade canopy. I don't know if that's possible, but within our ordinance, but.
Really, really quickly, just to give you the parameters under which. This body can reduce or waive the number of replant, require replacement trees. You can do so based on the following characteristics: size of the lot and capacity for replanting. Reasons for removal, number of trees being removed as part of any one request. Number of permitted tree, tree removals, capacity of five years. Presence of other trees and vegetation in the same lot and proposed sizes and type of replacement trees. So I think you're.
I'm actually not saying we would reduce the replacement trees. I'm saying for the additional replacement trees that we can determine a size.
What I'm actually saying is that I think your proposal actually fits.
Okay, thank you.
It's one of the parameters.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, how you want to. Condition the rest, that's up to you. It's up to you and based on the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I see our alternate commissioner Chow is out there and I'll solicit his point of view on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have these Mexican palms on my property and I can actually confirm everything that the appellantants are saying related to the fact that. These funds are quite a bit of nuisance, you know, in any windstorm or rainstorm. And, you know, they, I generally agree with that to the point where these funds are in fact nuisances to our property and that of our neighbors. We make a concerted, concerted efforts generally to, you know, clean up after a windstorm. But I can also confirm the mountain of funds that are just stacked in front of the house sometimes on the street. Whereby, when we experience something similar, the trash company doesn't pick it up. And it just kind of sits there in the streetscape for quite a while. We will call. And, you know, the following week they will come by and pick up a few, but not all of the funds. So from that perspective, I completely agree with the appellantants. I, I too believe that they don't provide any canopy and they are not the protected trees that I believe the tree ordinance was intended to protect. As, you know, in my opinion, they don't provide too much value. So I would be in favor of. What Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Boyle had had recommended and I too support, you know, any additional planting of replacement trees. To remove trees number two, three, four, along with seven, nine, ten, and eleven. And if I were able to. And if I were able to make a motion, I would, I would make that motion for, to grant the appellant's approval of removal two, three, four, seven, nine, ten, and eleven in addition with the conditions of what staff had provided and to increase the box sizes and gallon sizes pursuant to what Commissioner Boyle had said, but I'm an alternate, so those are my thoughts.
Oh, they're very good. I appreciate it, even though you are an alternate, your point of view is very well taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the appeal, the support of everything that's been stated by Commissioner Wright and Boyle. I, I feel that the, obviously, the, the, the residents have provided, you know, the example of it's being a safety hazard and it's an, almost a nuisance at some times. And I also resonate the point that, you know, the trees don't provide what they should provide as far as, you know, the intention of the protections of, of certain trees with certain canopies, generating canopies. I agree that they are beautiful and they, you know, on certain, you know, streets where they exist in, in, in rows and add a certain charm and beauty to our city. And when the wind blows and the fronds fly, it's the responsibility of the city at that point that cleans it up and sees to it. But even then, my, you know, I have family that live on the corner of Lorraine and West Haven and West Haven is at one of those streets that have that whole row of beautiful palms. And, you know, I've seen those palms, fronds fall and one's actually fallen right next to me and brushed my leg and it's, it is a danger and it is not appreciated when that happens. Given as much precaution as you can take, as much as you can do, you know, it's not. So I'm in support of the appeal and recommendations of what size replacements they may be.
Thank you, John.
Well, I'm not gonna go down without a fight. You know, I pass this property two to six times a week, depending on how much coffee I'm drinking. And I want to applaud the applicant for the work that they've done on that lot. It, it's been a tremendous improvement over the last, what they looked like, you know, several years ago. I'm a huge fan of olive trees and I was so worried that those trees were gonna be lost. I'm ecstatic that they have been saved and they're in really good shape. So it's clear to me that they appreciate trees. But I'm also really concerned with preserving process. And I believe the decision of this body on the Lorraine Road decision in August of last year was a mistake because it does not follow our established process. And I think Commissioner Wright laid out the argument for herself and for the applicants quite clearly. The reason to get rid of the trees is because you don't like that particular type of tree. I agree. I don't like palm trees. I have none on my property. My neighbor has six. When that next door property was vacant and abandoned for years, every time the wind gusted, I had a dumpster full of palm fronds to pick up in my yard. But now there's a family living there. They maintain the trees. I have not had a palm frond fall in my property in, that I can remember when, when the last time it happened. The palm trees at the subject property are not what I would consider to be well-pruned. They're, they're long into, so it doesn't surprise me that you have fronds falling in your yard. The pictures that you showed, yes, they're very dramatic, but if they have been not maintained for years and years and then you get a heavy wind, that's not anything I wouldn't expect. It comes down to you don't like that type of tree and you want to get rid of it. And I have some sympathy for that, but, you know, you talk about pruning a tree won't completely eliminate the hazard. Well, that's true. We all acknowledge that. Every arborist report that we have ever reviewed in this body, or at least that I've read, including the ones for this application, all have standard boilerplate language that says trees are living natural things. It's impossible to eliminate all risk. The only way to do that is to just eliminate trees. Our ordinance is quite clear about the criteria that we can use to deem a tree removable or not. And these just simply don't meet that criteria. With appropriate pruning, they would be at an acceptable level of risk. You're proposing to plant new trees that also are risky, those silk floss trees, the leaves, the bark, the seed pods, every part of that tree is toxic. You have little kids, you have a little dog. You ever seen one of those seed pods fall off the tree before it had a chance to crack open and lose all its seeds? They're about this big. They weigh sometimes between one and two pounds. They have a hardwood shell. They could really hurt if they hit you, but you're willing to accept that risk. So I'm not asking for discourse. I'm just paying out my, my thoughts. I do sympathize with the points that Commissioner Boyle brought up about sort of inheriting trees. I think our tree ordinance is very problematic, particularly, partly because it doesn't allow you to do what you're trying to do. But I'm worried about us basically saying, well, here's what we have to work with. These are the criteria that we can follow. We're gonna just say, well, we're not gonna follow that. Because now, I mean, I'm glad Commissioner Wright pointed it out that I said at the August meeting, this is gonna be a problem because I was gonna point it out if you didn't. Because now somebody else can come with a different type of tree and say, well, you know, you let them get rid of the palm trees because they didn't like them. I don't like sycamores. I don't like arbutus trees, whatever. And now where does that leave us? I think this is a really big mistake. I think the proper way to do it is to change the ordinance. I know that doesn't help these fine people outright tonight, but I just feel very strongly about that. Yes, the tree ordinance is very problematic, that, that tree replacement org, the matrix. I mean, it's well-intended, but it just, it's very limited in its usefulness. I mean, the, what you pointed out with the, the box size and all that, I mean, you go to any nursery and you look at a dozen different twenty-four inch boxes and they can have huge variation in the size of the trees. The other thing that really bugs me is there's nothing in the ordinance that has any teeth that when we let somebody put a tree in, that we can make sure that it's gonna survive in the long run. I mean, I have a neighbor on my street took out a huge fifty, sixty-foot pine tree. Yeah, it probably needed to go. The city let him replace it with two magnolias. Those trees are smaller, weaker, sticklier looking now than they were planted when they were planted a year ago, because he doesn't water them, he doesn't take, take care of them, he doesn't. So I'm not, the, the saving grace for, for this applicant is that I know what they've done with the olive trees. That gives me peace of mind, but I just, I don't know, I think it's, I think it's a, it is a mistake for us to not follow the process that we are given. I have voted on lots of houses that I don't think personally should be built. They're ugly. But I can't find in the residential design guidelines where there's something I can object to. I can't, if I can't do it by the process that's given to me, I have to vote for it, whether I like it or not personally, and I just think that should apply to trees as well. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. My point of view is I'm not a strict constructionist as, as John is. And I'm looking at, at the bigger picture in this whole thing. First of all, let's talk about these Mexican fan palms. You see them on parkways. You see them in front of large commercial buildings, in front of large apartment buildings where the structure itself, three to five stories, six stories high. The palm itself, Mexican fan palm, gets up to seventy-five feet in height and lives for five hundred years. I looked all that up. And frankly, it's not the kind of vegetation one would want around a single-story home. And I don't think we're constricted by the fact that someone ten, twenty, thirty, forty years ago, fifty years ago, planted something in an inappropriate place with an inappropriate tree and then we're locked in to tell the applicant, sorry, in nineteen fifty-four, some imbecile put it in this way and so we're gonna have to tell you, live with it. I don't believe that. I don't think that that was the intent of the city council with this tree ordinance and I think we, we've got to read it very broadly. And, and so I, I'm frankly of the opinion that as to palm seven, nine, ten, eleven, and two, three, and four, I'd support a removal, simple as that. Okay, do we have a, a motion?
May I ask our urban forester a question before?
I'm, I'm here if you guys have technical questions.
Thank you. If we were to make a condition in terms of replacement trees being based on canopy in this particular instance for these four removals, I know that it's asking you just on the cuff, like, you know, if I were to say that they had to have an additional three trees with a six-foot canopy, I mean, like, do I need to be that specific, do you think, or can I put in a condition like replacement trees based on canopy per the urban foresters' recommendation? Or, and I guess I'm looking at staff as well as you in terms of what kind of requirements we can put into this condition if we approve these trees to be removed?
I don't really know.
Okay.
Because that's a more of a process question and how we would follow up.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, to Commissioner Dustin's point about how we don't have teeth for making sure that things are well cared for in the future. But my thought is, you know, nothing is static. This is all dynamic and so people can show us that they plant mitigation trees and that they do well and then they can always come back and, you know, in the future, remove more. And we might, the body might be more likely to approve that, seeing that the mitigation trees are growing in. In terms of rewriting the ordinance, that's a whole other can of worms.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying, and yes, I agree, like, in terms of rewriting the ordinance, I'm just trying to figure out how to best, you know, make a motion that will have it be that, you know, I, like,
Let me just share.
Where a shade canopy is created and maybe even saying like, you know, can they report back to us? And can we have a one-year check-in that these trees are alive? I mean.
But if not, what, what do we do then? Once, once we pass it out tonight, it's out of our hands. We have, we have lost. That's my big concern. But here, let, let me just.
I'm sorry, I know that we are talking about the other option that I had, I want to put on the table and I'm sorry that I'm putting this on the table, but would anybody be opposed to continue this with the requirement that the applicant comes back with a landscape plan?
Because you said you did have a landscape plan, but you didn't submit it. You did submit it?
It was in the packet, but that was another, I should have brought that up with the staff question. It was not legible. You could not read it. You couldn't read the container sizes. You couldn't read the species of the tree.
I was gonna ask you to interpret it for me.
I had to use my giant magnifying glass to just.
Okay, I had to, thank you. That makes me feel so much better because I thought it was just me. So, so I don't know how we feel about, because I was interested, it was actually on my notes and I didn't get to it, about the landscape plan.
No, I think that's an excellent point and that, that bothered me a lot. Because I didn't, I didn't get a, a real feel for how and why things were laid out and what were they? You know, which is kind of a mystery to me.
So I, so we could make a motion, I know we.
I know, I mean, I.
We're sorry, but, but we would really, it, it's funny because I did have it on my notes, but was actually to ask all of you to help me to, it would be helpful, I think, especially if you have one, but to see one that we can really see. You have it now, you're saying?
Yeah, we, we've seen it, but, but it's not as specific as we would have wanted.
Well, maybe with their, I couldn't read, I couldn't read.
Eric, can you pull up the landscaping plan?
See if we can, on their presentation, it sounds like they have one.
But the one on the presentation is not the landscape plan. It's, you, you have the same site plan, but it.
They're saying that in the appendix, they have a landscape.
I saw something there.
I didn't see that.
All right, let's, all right.
That's what I saw.
Yeah.
That's what I saw too. Yeah, I couldn't read it.
That's legible.
Can you interpret it for us? What are all the?
If you, if you want to step up to the mic.
Yeah, I, I can't read it from here, so I don't know what we're gonna accomplish. If I can't read it from here, I'm sure my compatriots can't.
Yeah, what are the border, what are the, the trees or plants that are on the border, all, all with the green around them?
So those are potocarpus racquo. Yes, exactly. And those are heritage trees. So I, you know, I.
But they're like a hedge then, right? They're like a privet.
A potocarpus, I mean, I have one in my backyard, but it's a single standing one and it's like, you know, fifty feet high and it spreads like fifty feet wide. It's huge, but most people just, if you plant them like that, like six feet apart, it's just gonna be simply a big giant hedge.
Yeah.
On, on the outer perimeter, yes.
And then what are the two trees that you have designated?
Those were gonna be the, yeah, the silk floss, which I did not know that they were poisonous, otherwise.
So that, that, there's two kinds, one of them that has thorns on the trunk and then the one that she specifically gave us, it doesn't have thorns and it's not poisonous, but we went with her recommendation. I don't, I.
I don't know about the toxicity. I have no awareness of ever, anyone I know or their pets ever having consumed a part of it. However, I do know that the fluff inside is used for pillow stuffing in Southeast Asia and they are actually.
Also life preservers.
Cultivated for the cottony fluff that it's used for pillows, but I'm unaware of anything in the literature about anyone ever being poisoned.
All right, so you're, so you're basically recommend or proposing hedges, a lot of plants, trees, whatever you call them, they'll be hedged, and then two other trees.
So when we proposed this, I mean, the urban forester tree recommendation came later, so it was much more reasonable to work with. When we proposed this, I think this was like a total of thirty-nine replacement trees and we couldn't figure out how to do that without putting a lot of them on a tree line, the whole property. And then the other two trees, so the one in the corner, there is like a huge span kind of around that entire corner where there's no trees at all. Like, we have a lot of trees on Monterey Road. There's two parkway trees on Oak Knoll, but then there was a huge vacant area. So with our landscape park, it's like kind of strategically put that there so that it kind of filled in that, that portion. And then just also had one also in the backyard. But, you know, with the more reasonable like tree replacement reduction, it would have been easier to work with rather than when we first thought like, you know, we had to go like so many of them. So that was the, the reasoning behind our proposal.
Yeah, my, my thought, you know, is, is kind of a compromise would be to approve the removal of palms seven, nine, ten, eleven and have them come back with a thorough landscaping plan so we know what is going on. And after all of that, recommend that we have a study group to revise that, that tree ordinance.
Correct, if I'm wrong, you see, Laura, but I, we're voting on the denial, the appeal, right?
Correct.
So if we, if we approve the removal of the trees, now it becomes an over-the-counter issue to resolve the landscape plan. That's not under our purview, technically.
Correct. So the landscaping plan is our requirement for the ordinance.
We can make it a condition.
You, well, it, it's an extra expense that, again, the ordinance does not require anyone else to do. I, I think maybe perhaps the best way to approach this would be to have a condition where there's coordination with the city's urban forester in terms of the placement of the replacement trees to best survive.
Antifest creates shade canopy. Antifast create shade canopy.
Uh, correct.
I will share. Howard, you and Shelley basically convinced me I was gonna vote for this, but, um, I like that. I'm, I'm confident in the urban forester, given her logic and rationale for. To remove those palm trees, that makes sense to me, so, and again, the applicant has demonstrated to me, to my satisfaction, that they. Are gonna care for these trees, so I, I think that's a reasonable compromise.
So can I make a motion?
Yeah, please.
Can we just say one more thing?
Yeah.
To Isidro, it obviously is very, I think it's very clear that we need to make revising this ordinance a priority. And so I don't know what steps need to be done to have that happen, but, you know, we're running into issues like this. Because the ordinance is not adequate, so whatever we need to do, if that's taking it as an agenda item to the city council. Or.
So, um, I, I think the first option would be to take this concern. Uh, uh, when the chair and I and the vice chair have our meetings. Uh, we can share that concern with the city council liaison.
Okay.
That'll be the first step. Um, it is the city council's prerogative, whether they would like to include this as part of their work plan for staff. We have not, we've received, um, and, and this was when, in the absence of the city, uh, urban foresters position at the time was vacant. Uh, city council did want to take a look at the process, not necessarily re-hall of the ordinance, but the process. So, you know, when I have my discussions with the chair and the vice chair, we can talk about, uh. You know, obviously, the, the items are of concern with plant commission and so forth. And we can take those items to our, uh, to the city's, uh, city council, plant commission liaison. They can then pass that on and if they want to, obviously the council can mandate that. Also. Uh, when, uh, plant commission and DRC meet with city council, which it's either gonna happen this year or the next year, depending on. The politics, uh, that could be an item that collectively the, the client commission can also bring up. Uh, so those are the, the methods that, uh, that, uh, would be available to this commission for that particular item. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, I will move to approve, chairman will permit TRP two-two dash five-one-zero at three zero one-one Monterey Road. With the condition that applicants work with or app, appellants work with, uh, city staff as well as our city urban forester. To properly identify, uh, location of the tree replacement trees as well as, uh, canopy shading. Uh, for optimal canopy shading on the property.
May I just clarify for a moment? I'm sorry, just to make sure that that, uh, motion. Uh, includes the removal of trees two, three, four and seven, nine, ten and eleven. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct with the conditions, uh, with the approval of those tree removals.
Yeah, we're dying the appeal is to number eight, the Chinese elm.
And to the, with the denial of the Chinese elm, uh, tree number eight.
Can I just ask a quick question? Now that you know that it's likely that those additional palms are going to be, um, permitted to be removed. Would that change your recommendation in terms of the number of trees and types of trees for replacement?
So, right now, as the ordinance is written, uh, we don't have any influence on what is planted. You know, when I'm meeting with people, I have been making recommendations.
Okay.
So, you know, my objective is more canopy cover, more green. Um, but as it's written, I don't have, that's not in the.
Well, not, not necessarily the type even, but just your rec, because when you, when you did your review, you. Came up with a revised recommendation for replacement of the four times twenty-four inch and the eight times fifteen gallons. So now that you know that these additional, what is it, five, six trees are gonna be removed, would that change your analysis of that?
Not necessarily in terms of the number, since eight, you know. The size, again, of the plant means nothing, so eight fifteen gallons, you know, total we're saying twelve. So it would really depend on the landscape plan, uh, and what, what available spaces.
I second the motion.
Okay, let's have a roll call on that.
So, um. Chair Brody?
Um, yes.
Vice Chair Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes by. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your, uh, you're making that home a beautiful place.
Uh, my dog is doing a very good job at killing all of the neighbor, or all of the lizards on your, uh, sidewalk.
We still have consent calendar items, right?
Yes.
One, two and three.
Yeah, I, 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 we're gonna go on to that, uh, items number two and three. Uh, Jerry, do you have any changes you recommend on those?
I, I already gave my changes to staff and they, uh.
There you have it.
Yeah.
It's all right, so, uh.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, it's jointly, everyone approved it. All right, other matters, community develop, uh, development directors report.
Uh, really short, uh, during the last city council meeting, the city council approved an amendment for the land use consultant, so we'll have more additional help. While we still have our senior planner position vacated. Um, at that same meeting, our staff was recognized, uh. Commander Martinez, Eric G. and Savag Sassunian, who is a, the other assistant planner, they were recognized as new employees. Um, and again, just wanna thank both, uh, Eric and Savag, they've been doing a great job. Trying to catch us up on that backlog and they're doing great. Uh, we're currently caught up on everything except the, uh, discretionary permits, the ones that are going before you. And DRC, DRC, we're, we're gaining weight and for, uh, the, uh, plant commission ones. That's why it was important to have the, retain the services of the land use consultant, so hopefully we'll have more projects for you. Uh, Ms. Commander Martinez will be on vacation next week, so if you have anything that you need from her, make sure you, uh, you have today, tomorrow and Friday. She well-deserved. Um, I couldn't, uh, sing her praises enough at the city council meeting. She's been doing a great job training Eric and Savag and. Again, just to remind you, she was, she's been the only planner now for months, full-time planner, so we are really grateful for, uh. Really grateful for Eric and Savag joining us and, uh, we've been referring to our urban forester a lot tonight, uh, when it presented Laura Hall. Um, she's, uh, she's been a, a great addition to the team, helping out, uh, all the, uh. Uh, residents who have been yelling at us for not having their, not reviewing their, uh, tree removal applications and she has a lot of.
Literally have a stack of papers on my desk that high, and that's just for private tree removals, so that's not any of the public stuff.
Wow, wow.
Is your office in Lacey Park where Sammy used to be?
Um, and that concludes the director's report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I think, uh, that concludes this, uh, September meeting. So we are now adjourned.
Did we?
Did we?
The minutes?
I thought we did.
Oh, you did.
So we did. Uh, Camelia, do you have something for me to sign, so you don't have to trace me down?
Um, I don't, but I can email it to you if you'd like to sign it. Yeah, it's, I, the. We didn't know if there's any additional changes to the resolution tonight. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.